So hello everyone, I am the host Lisa. Welcome to the 10th session of Fireside Science Chat done in collaboration with IEEE's Women in Engineering. For those who have attended any of the previous nine sessions, welcome back and good to see you all again. So first off, we have some of the routine announcements. This session will be recorded in public. If anyone does not wish to appear in the recording, please let us know after the session. During the talk, when you're not talking, please be on mute so as to prevent background noise. And if you have any questions, please use the chat at the bottom of the screen. Today, we'll be mainly saving the questions for the end, but if there's any quick clarifying questions, we can sit, we can ask them for you. The questions can also be typed in Chinese, we can translate them into English. Alright, so today's talk was done in collaboration with IEEE's Women in Engineering, as previously mentioned. We will first have a short introduction from Women in Engineering, explaining their organization. Let's welcome their coordinator of the Women in Engineering Coordinator of IEEE Region 2, Ms. Carol Carey.
Thank you very much Lisa, sorry, I was on mute. Hello, this is Carol Carey. Good morning or good evening, wherever you are in this big wide world. To our students, parents and friends, thank you for Zooming with us today. Today, we're now all connected, so far 42 participants strong. The Women Engineering Group of IEEE, or the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, are very excited. We are honored to be part of this amazing collaboration with Dr. Chang Lu and his team, who started the Fireside Science Chats early this year in January for homebound middle school and high school students due to COVID-19 outbreak in Wuhan. Our collaboration expands this initiative to engage with students all across the globe. But before Lisa introduces our first woman Fireside Science Chat speaker, I just want to say a few words about the IEEE Women Engineering Group. Around the world, we have nearly 20,000 members linked together in over 100 countries. Our members and volunteers are women and men dedicated to promoting women engineers and scientists. We inspire girls and boys around the world to follow the students' interests in a career in science, technology, engineering and math. So welcome again, everyone. I'm looking forward to learning with you. Let's join the chat with Dr. Susan Esken coming up shortly. Lisa, over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so today we will be listening to a talk by Dr. Susan Lemieux-Eskin. As Ms. Carol mentioned, she is our first Fireside Science Chat Woman Speaker. Dr. Esken has a PhD in nuclear physics and after finishing graduate school, Dr. Esken earned certification in MR physics from the American Board of Medical He has worked using functional MRI and physiological MRI methods in her research. She has many publications relating to magnetic resonance. For this session, Dr. Esken will be discussing magnetic resonance imaging, which is also known as MRI, a medical imaging technique used to take pictures and movies of the organs in the body. Let us now welcome Dr. Esken.
I'm unmuted now and I'm hoping that you can all see me. And now I'm going to share my screen and see if I can make sure that you can see everything. And hi to everything, and I hope everyone can see my first magnetic resonance imaging slide. Is that showing okay for everyone? Lisa, does it look good?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and start and I'm going to tell you that over the course of the time, I'm going to show you several different things. So sometime we'll be looking at PowerPoint slides and sometimes I'm going to be sharing my camera with you. So you might want to be able to make sure that you keep my video picture posted at the same time because I'm going to switch back and forth between a couple of different cameras. And before I get started, I'd just like to say that I was very happy to start one of the first Women in Engineering chapters at the university where I work, which is Penn State's campus at Harrisburg. So that was a very big deal for me and that was how I met Carol Carey and how I met the Lou family who are hosting this event tonight, so I'm very proud to be part of. So I'm going to tell you my story about magnetic resonance imaging and I'm mainly going to start by telling you a little bit of history about how MRI came to be. And I really fell in love with it. I think magnetic resonance imaging is profoundly cool and I hope you'll like it as much as I do. So first, I'll show you an image. Let's see if my talk will start. Here we go. This is an image and this is my brain right here on the side. Now, I would like to show you something so that you understand a little bit about what it is. You're going to need to look at my head too. So I would like to show you from my FaceTime camera, so let's see if you can see me too. So if you're looking at me and I were to draw a picture right through the side of my head view here, this first view and then slice up, 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 up and up and up, right up to the top. So what you're looking at right now is a slice right through the top of my head. And then you can see, as you look along the sides, you'll be able to see my ears as it goes. So let's play that through one more time. See the ears and then the ears disappear. You come through the top and then you go all the way up to the top of the head. And that's something that you can uniquely do with MRI imaging where you can see the whole brain and you can see the gray and the white matter parts of the brain that look like that as they go through. Only MRI does that. You can't get pictures like that with CT. What you're seeing on the left side of the screen is a whole different way to think about these pictures. Each one of these pictures has an image that looks like this, which is what the data looks like as a 2D Fourier transform, which is a very fancy math thing that you get to learn on your way through when you're learning about MRI. And I'm not going to teach you about 2D Fourier transform, but I hope you think it's kind of cool and maybe you might get interested in learning that later. So we're going to talk about how MRI, NMR was discovered. So it used to be nuclear magnetic resonance, but people get afraid when you say nuclear. Then we're going to talk about how MRI itself was invented and how MRI works. And I'm going to tell you about what it would be like to go get an MRI for yourself. And then we're going to talk about some of the more advanced MRI methods at the end of the talk and then we'll be done. So this is Isidore Isaac Robbie and he's really credited with the discovery of nuclear magnetic resonance. And this was the data that he took where he saw this resonance. But it was a strange experiment that he did to a lot of scientists because it was done in a molecular beam and the molecular beam was of a lithium chloride molecular ions. And that was a little bit esoteric, a little bit off the beaten path, if you could say. But he did win a Nobel Prize for it and he was working at that time with other people who were studying similar things. And somehow, I'm not going forward, here they are. And so more commonly known is that Block and Purcell were the people. Block was in California and Purcell was in Massachusetts. And both of them also are credited with discovering nuclear magnetic resonance. But really, there were a group of people working and the people who published the seminal papers first were the people who got those Nobel Prizes. They also realized that nuclei could resonate. So I want to talk just for a few minutes about the science behind all this and we're not going to go deep. We're going to go light and easy and hopefully I can put this idea across in such a way that you'll understand. Protons are inside water and protons are inside fat and protons are inside lots and lots and lots of organic molecules. They're everywhere. So let's think just for a second about the simplest nuclei that there is, or the simplest atom, hydrogen. So it's the very first one in the table of the elements. So there's one proton and one electron circling around it. That's the hydrogen atom. So the hydrogen atom, its nucleus is called a proton. And protons have a spin and that spin is what gives them their magnetic moment and that's what makes them magnetic. So protons are like little tiny magnets that spin around and MRI produces images of our protons. So originally, this was called nuclear magnetic resonance because it's the nuclei that actually resonates and that's an important point. But everybody began to be very afraid of anything nuclear because of the atomic bomb that they started calling the nuclear bomb and you might have heard it called the hydrogen bomb. So that was kind of a scary thing and in the interest of making it seem safe for medical imaging because it is extremely safe, they decided to call it magnetic resonance instead. So how does this happen to be so good for us for medical imaging? So people are made mostly of water. Did you know that, that you're mostly water? And water has one oxygen atom and two hydrogen atoms. So mostly, you're made of hydrogen. So that's really handy for magnetic resonance imaging because we're mostly made of protons. So we have lots and lots of protons for MRI to image. So that's a really good thing. So now we've talked a little bit about how protons are part of this whole magnetic resonance imaging. And now I want to talk to you a little bit about what a resonance is. A resonance is a natural frequency of vibration. And we're going to use my other camera for a minute so that I can show you how that works. Here we go. And this is something that you'll be able to do so that everybody in your whole family can enjoy resonance. So a resonance is like what you can make with a glass. Can everyone hear that? It's a beautiful ringing sound as the glass resonates. That's a natural resonance of the glass. It's at a fairly low frequency. That's with a full glass. And then I can take it and I can change the resonant frequency by pouring out some of the water. Put my glass back and here we go. Now we have a nice high frequency. So I can make two different resonances in one glass just by changing the amount of water. Now, how do I know that that's a resonance and something else isn't? Well, what if I take this glass now? It's got water in it. Shouldn't it resonate and make a sound? Oh, it just makes a squeak. This is not a resonant glass. And just like some glasses are resonant, some atoms are resonant and have a magnetic moment and make a resonance and some are not. So let's go back now and think about how something can be magnetically resonant. So let's pretend that this tire, which is a swing, is like a proton in a strong magnetic field. Here it goes. It's swinging back and forth. And if you could imagine for a minute that you wanted to make that tire swing, you would have to push it every time it got to the end here. And that's what we do in MRI. We push at exactly the same time as the protons come back. So let's go and think about what happens if it's here. Here, it's lower frequency going slower and then it can go higher frequency and faster. So that's like our two glasses. We can have a lower, slower one or a higher, faster one. And that's what Block and Purcell found out that Professor Robbie hadn't found out. So he found the first resonance, but they found out that it depended on the magnetic field and that you could do it not just with some strange gas like Dr. Robbie did, but that you could do it with protons and other nuclei too. So that's what made everybody get famous over the same thing. So let's think for a minute. I mean, a tire is one way to think about it because we know what tires look like, but here's how protons actually do it. So here's the proton. They actually sort of spin around and they actually process more than spin. But this is one way that we could think about it. So that's the lower, slower and there's the higher, faster. That's how the protons work. Now, those are the two different kinds of ways we can think about frequencies. And we can make those frequencies go lower and medium and high and everything in between. We have the ability to change those frequencies as much as we want. But there's another thing that's really important in NMR and that's relaxation times. So we could have what's like a long relaxation time. So it slowly spins down, spinning down but slowly, or we could have a quick relaxation time. Uh oh. My quick relaxation time is not happening for us, but this would spin down slowly here and here it would go fast, quick, quick, quick. So here we go. And this is what Raymond de Madien found out and he got very famous for this. Because what he found out was that regular tissues in the body, brain and muscle, kidney and liver, all of these regular tissues, all kind of have similar relaxation coefficients, but tumors had much longer, slower relaxation coefficients. And that was a big deal. And this was the moment at which the medical community stepped up and went, oh, this is going to be important for us. This is 1971. So it was the early 50s when we found out about NMR and it was the early 70s, 20 years later, when we found out it was going to be really important in the medical world. And around that same time, a person who was studying for his PhD in chemistry named Paul Lotteberg was sitting, eating a hamburger at an Eaton Park in Pennsylvania, which is not that far from where a bunch of us are right now. And he was working at a company putting himself through graduate school. He was sitting there eating his hamburger and he had an epiphany. And this is what his epiphany looks like. He realized that if he could move around and take some MR type scans in different positions around his MRI machine, around his magnetic resonance machine, he could make different kinds of scans that he could put together and turn it into an image. This is called tomography today and we use it to do CT today. And his statement about this is that before every big breakthrough, that first, there's a crazy idea. He started writing in that notebook and he had so many ideas that have turned into things that we use in medicine today. He is just a powerhouse. They say on the feet of giants we stand or on the shoulders of giants, so much science has been done. And this is a person that I've been happy to say I could sit in the audience and listen to him talk. He's an amazing speaker and a very, very nice man. So this was 1973 that he wrote about this. The first MRI scan was of two water test tubes. And over in England, there was a gentleman named Paul Mansfield. And this is the first MRI machine that he put together. It was only one half of a Tesla and I'll tell you about Teslas in a little bit. This is 1977. This is the year I graduated high school. He built this beautiful MRI machine and he made the first whole body MRI scan in this machine over in England. And because he learned how to make very fast images, one of the things that we were able to do was make images of beating hearts. And that's because of Paul Mansfield. So Paul Mansfield and Paul Lotteberg were working together in the field of MRI around the same time. He also made this very early image. This happened much earlier than other people were of a baby inside its mother's womb. And so pictures like this aren't usually possible because babies, as you may know, move a lot inside their mothers before they're born and you can't usually take pictures like this. But Paul Mansfield learned how to take pictures very fast. And here the two of them are. They shared in 2003 the Nobel Prize for their discoveries in MRI. And here's Paul Lotteberg. In the year 2003, all of these people won Nobel Prizes for America. And or they were Americans who won Nobel Prizes. So there they all are with the president. And these two Pauls who won their Nobel Prizes and shared it for MRI were great friends and they're quite wonderful people. This is an example of what you could do with what Paul Mansfield developed. So this is a very fast image that was taken. So you can acquire an image that you can use to make functional MRI scans in two seconds. A whole scan of the brain in two seconds. And then you can take the data from those and you can figure out where you're tapping your fingers. So this is a finger tapping scan. So if you pick your fingers up, so take your hand and if you take your thumb and put it to each one of your fingers like I'm doing here and you wonder where on earth in your brain that's happening, that's what this is a picture of. And this is the part of the brain that's making that part of the scan. And these are called functional MRI images and you make them with a regular old MRI scanner. So this is what we've learned about MRI. We get excellent soft tissue contrast. You can take those images in different ways. So you could take them scanning up the brain. This is going through my brain. This is again an image of me. And here you are. There's my eyes going back through the back of my head. There's the cerebellum. And there's the very back of my head. So and no radiation and you can take all different kinds of images. So now we're going to talk for a little minute about this T1 and T2. So we talked about the fact that MRI is producing images of our protons. And we talked about how they will go in a slow relaxation or a faster relaxation. So those are called T1s and T2 times. And we also need to know where the protons are in space. How do we find their X, Y, Z position? So we need these two things to understand an MRI. So T1 and T2 are kind of like this. So if you've got a proton that's in a part of the body that can move freely without bumping into anything. So imagine you're in a bumper car place or imagine you're in a big ocean and you're swimming. You have lots of room. You won't bump into anybody very much. So you can swim a long time and not bump into anybody. That's like a long T1 and a long T2 value. So that makes for tissues that can be very bright. If the protons are surrounded by large molecules, they bump into each other and into the large molecules like people in a crowded pool. So they're bumping into each other like this. So then they have short T1 and short T2 values. And that's the difference between these two kinds of relaxation times. So here's some of the numbers and we're not going to read all these numbers carefully, but just let's look for a minute at something that's called cerebral spinal fluid. So this is the waterish kind of stuff that protects your brain. Your brain kind of floats in it and it goes all the way down through your spine. See, it has a very long T1 and a long T2. It's the longest T1 and the longest T2 of all these numbers. And looking back, that's like protons that are in the ocean. And then if you go and you look here, we can find some other numbers that are very short. So where are our short numbers? Something like fat. And that's actually your scalp is made of fat. So there, the protons are all bumping into each other all the time. And that's like all the people in the very crowded pool bumping into each other all the time. And then they have these short T1s and T2s. So how does that show up in the images? So here's the difference. This is a T1 weighted image. It was taken so that you can see all the fat. So there's the fat in the person's cheeks. A scalp is mostly made of fat. There's all the fat in the scalp. But eyes, which are kind of watery, they look sort of dark here. And the cerebral spinal fluid, which is the stuff the brain is bathed in, is all around through here. It's all dark too. All this dark stuff here, all this watery type stuff, it's all dark. That's because it's T1 weighted images and they don't make the water show up bright. If you look here in the T2 weighted image, you can see that the eyes are very bright and they're kind of like watery. And you also see that the white matter in the brain shows up very bright. And you see that the, you can't actually see it, but the CSF would be very bright in this kind of an image also. So that's the difference between those. So now we know that T1 and T2 will let us see differences in the image, but we need to know where the protons are. It doesn't do you any good to see the differences if you don't know where they are. So you can find out that you have a tumor, but you don't know where it is in your body. That's not very useful. So this is how that works. If we can control the strength of the magnetic field at different positions in space and we know how fast the protons are spinning at those different positions, then we know where they are and that's how MRI works. So here's an example. This one was swimming, was spinning slower. It had a lower frequency and it's spinning slower. That would be down by the feet. This one, we could get this one to be higher frequency, spinning faster. That one would be up by the head. And how would that look? Well, here's the magnet and what we do is we draw an axis on the magnet and we have an X position and we have a Y position and we have a Z position. So the main magnetic field is going along the Z position, but we can change the strength in any direction that we want because we have these really fancy things called gradients. And the gradients go in the X, Y and Z direction. And I'm showing you an example in the Z direction. So along the Z direction here, what we've done is we've subtracted magnetic field in one direction and we've added magnetic field in the other direction. So the magnetic field is lower by the person's feet and it's higher by the person's head. And these are coupled. So the frequency is lower down here and the protons are spinning more slowly. Up by the head, it's higher. And so we can tell where the protons are because we're changing the field when we want to. And we can do the same thing in the other two directions so that we know wherever we are. And I'm not going to go through the whole thing for you because it takes too long and to do it properly requires math that most of you haven't had yet. So we're just going to leave that for another day. But I'll tell you that what we do is we're going to make a gradient that'll change things so that I can see along this direction. And I'll change my gradient all along here and each time I do it, I'll go this way one and I'll go another time and another time until I go all the way along here. And we call this a pulse sequence. So I pick a slice, like say, right through my head and then I'm going to make, pick one of these lines and then I make a scan across the line and then I pick another one and another scan across the line. And that's how I collect the data for each one of the slices in MRI. So as I collect that data, it doesn't look pretty like that. It's in Fourier transform space. So then I do a lot of electronic collection. I do some math. I have some more engineering to do. There's science behind it and you end up with your beautiful MRI image. One of the interesting features of Fourier transform space is that the center of the space contains the rough shape. So if I acquire just the very middle of the data, a little teeny tiny bit of it, I can do the 2D Fourier transform. I can do the 2D Fourier transform and get this. And then I acquire a little bit more and I get more of the detail. And then I acquire this much more and I get all of this. So 2D Fourier transform is a very interesting way to look at things. And once again, that ability of ours lets us take data, this cardiac cycle kind of data. Because I only have to acquire that very center of the image. So I can acquire data very, very quickly. So what if you decide to go and get an MRI? There's the Nittany Lion is the Penn State mascot. And he came and went around the MRI scanner. So we talk about magnetic fields in units after Nikolai Tesla called Teslas. And it's called 3T. So one Tesla is 10,000 gauss. The Earth's magnetic field is a half a gauss. So just for reference, you walk around every day in a magnetic field that's a half a gauss. And if it was one Tesla, that would be 10,000 gauss. So three Tesla, that's 30,000 gauss or 60,000 times the Earth's magnetic field. So it's a lot of magnetic field. So there's a lot of different kinds of MRI scanners and I'm going to show you some. Let's notice that he's sitting on the table that you would lie down on to go inside it. The table rises up and then it goes down inside. And you get yourself tucked inside this nice little thing that looks kind of like a tunnel. Here's an example. I worked at West Virginia University for a while and I'm going to show you a number of their scanners. While I was working there, we were installing scanners at a rate of about one a year. So I was very fortunate, I got to help install a bunch of them. This is a friend of mine named Brad who was working there. This is a blood pressure machine. So you could have your blood pressure taken while you were inside the scanner. So that we make sure that your blood pressure didn't go up or go down. Here's another one. Notice it looks very similar. This is a coil that you can put your, this is for breast MRI. So that's a really good way to determine whether or not, if they find a lump in a woman's breast, whether or not she has cancer, you can lay down inside there. And then they slide you inside, you actually go in backward for breast MRI. And this is a friend of mine named Polly who worked there. And this is another one of the guys who worked there. His name was Matt. And you can see the person who's down inside the scanner and Matt was adjusting and tucking him in. There are some more coils. So this is one of the head coils with somebody down inside it. And then we have whole body coils. So we can take a scan of your entire self while you're down inside there. This is a different type of scanner. This is called an open scanner. So it's a one Tesla scanner. And you notice that this one doesn't have a tunnel. We call that the bore. And what this has instead is a couple of pedestals that hold it up. And I'm going to show you what it looks like inside. There's the inside of a scanner like that. So there's an enormous roomy place inside here. And instead of having the field go along the patient table in and out. The MR field goes up and down in this kind of a scanner. So it's different. And it allows people who are claustrophobic, who are uncomfortable going inside one of those tunnels to go inside here. It's very comfortable. And if you look at this, you can see that there's lots of room all around it. And in the one that we had at West Virginia University, along the sides here, we would play videos and we put a lot of different children inside. Made them very comfortable to be in there. We have gone all the way up to seven Tesla. So that's 14,000 times the Earth's magnetic field. And you can make absolutely beautiful images with these seven Tesla machines. It's just three years ago that those were cleared for clinical imaging. And you might wonder why on earth you would want to do that. And you can get a scan like this in less than half a second. And what you can do with that is you can make images of the white matter in the brain. This is the wiring inside your brain. So if you were to think of your brain as a very complicated set of computers that are all wired together. The white matter is the wiring and the gray matter is all the computers. And this is the kind of images that we get at three Tesla. So we study the way people grow, how their white matter changes as they grow, how it changes as they age. And then we also look to see whether or not it's healthy, whether or not you have any problems with it. So for example, if you have multiple sclerosis, your white matter is hurt. This is what it looks like at 70. Look at the amazing detail you get of all those fibers inside someone's brain. So you can see that a seven Tesla MRI might be a very useful thing to have, but they are very expensive. Here's what it looks like when an MRI is being installed. It goes on an enormous crane like this. And then it came down inside. They almost always go in the basement because they're very heavy. And it had to go inside a hole here. And this was kind of an interesting situation because we found out the hole wasn't big enough. And they hadn't prepared properly for the scanner to be put in. And they had to go in there and, and they had to whack out the hall and they had to whack out the hole. The ceiling was too low. It was a very interesting several days while we put the scanner in. And then we had to put the ceiling back in. And here I am, very proudly looking at the scanner. It was quite a nice day. And I thought I'd show you what an MRI delivery looks like. So this is the three Tesla scanner that was delivered at University Park outside of Penn State. It came in on two tractor trailer beds. There's one tractor trailer that has all of the control equipment that goes with it. And then this is the one that had the actual scanner on the side of it. And the scanner is inside this big blue box. And here it looks after the big blue box was taken off of it. This is what the scanner looks like on the outside. There's the patient table on it. And here's all the different connections that we need to make inside. And then here it is on its crane going up in the air. And here we are, going to lower it down into the pit. And this time it fit, it just barely fit. You look at it, it's just barely going to fit, but it fit. There were no problems at all. And it came right down here into the room. There was one interesting thing. It seems that there was some sort of an argument about whether or not there was an Indian burial site. And we weren't allowed to dig right away. But then it turned out it was okay. So that was a really good thing. And they swung it in through and there it is sitting down. And there it is with all its covers. So you could have your scan in a scanner like this. But you have to be very careful. So it is a really strong magnetic field and things like this happen. So if there's something on wheels and it's got enough metal in it, it can get stuck to the magnet. And this is a wheelchair stuck to the magnet. I've seen hospital beds stuck to the magnet. I've seen chairs stuck to the magnet. We didn't have that happen at our place, but it happened at other places. So we were very careful. And I'd like to show you what it looks like when somebody has to get something out of the scanner. So here we go. So that was a big day and it was very exciting for everybody that they were able to get that out without having to take the magnetic field down. Because it's a big deal to have to ramp down the magnetic field. It costs the hospital a lot of money and it takes a lot of time. So those gentlemen just did a very wonderful, good deed and they were able to get it safely out. So the way that the scanner rooms are designed is like this. So you have the control room back here where everyone works. And then there's a nice, safe, separate room where the person goes. And there are ways that you can go in with someone if you're afraid or if the other person's afraid. There are ways you can go in. But mostly we try to keep people out. And we try to just play nice music or play something for them that they like. Sometimes you can play video for people. Depends on how the scanner is set up. So that it's better to only have the person who needs the scan to be in the room. So this is an example of a beautiful MRI setup. They've got the ceiling all beautifully done. And often you can see the ceiling because you might go in feet first. Maybe if you're having your knee done, you could still see the ceiling. And then I thought you might like to hear what a scanner sounds like. Here you go. And that came from an ISMRM, which is the International Society of Magnetic and Resonance Sounds and Visions CD. That was in, I think around 2005. And different people sent different things in. And MRI scientists are very creative. And that EPI sequence that you heard, that flip, 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 is the one that Paul Mansfield discovered that, or created that I told you about. And that's what we use for FMRI. So when we talk about functional MRI, that's the sound you would hear when you heard that. Let's play it, hear it one more time. Here we go. That's it. That's EPI. And now this is a sound. That goes with the scan, that's more of just a picture. Sorry, it keeps playing for me. I'm trying to get to the next slide. So here we go. So the one thing I was telling you was that you need to be careful with metal because you don't want anything stuck to the scanner. But the other thing is you don't want to move inside the scanner. And the reason is that you don't know whether or not you're going right through that center where it's collecting the shape. And when you collect the shape, you get this funny effect. So you see how blurry this is and how it looks all strange? Almost like a picture gets very blurry if you move during your picture. It's exact same idea. And so you can't move during the scanner while you're getting scanned. So when they tell you not to move, it's because they don't want to see this kind of a thing. And then it takes extra time. So if you go for an MRI, try and hold still. So one of the things that's really interesting now is that we can do all these studies of the brain with functional MRI. And one of the curious things about that is that it was discovered completely accidentally. What happened? Now, it's possible it would have been discovered anyway. A lot of things are, but it was discovered like this. So they were working on studying some animals. These are actually rat brains. And the animal was sleeping inside the scanner as rats do. And the drug was running low. So they give a drug called halothane, which is an anesthetic agent. And the sleeping drug started running low. So instead of being at its full 3%, it was only at 0.75%. And one of the effects of this anesthesia is that it lowers blood flow. And what the person who was watching the scan saw all of a sudden was that the brain image started to look different. He's looking and he sees all this strange, different looking dark areas. And he's confused because it was looking sort of like this. And so he didn't understand right away, but he thought it might be due to the brain activity. Because he was actually also watching the brain activity and he saw that changing. It's actually how he knew that the animal was waking up was that he saw that his brain activity was coming back up. Well, he got all the way to the end of the scan. And at the end, he was safe to replace the oxygen with nitrogen. And then, look at this, then he really saw a difference. So now the blood flow is completely different. So that's how functional MRI was discovered. And what we know about functional MRI now is that what happens when an individual area where neurons are firing, when they need more blood and more glucose because they're firing. They have a higher metabolic rate. What the brain does is it cries out for more blood flow. And it provides more blood flow to that particular region of the brain, which makes it brighter. And that's how functional MRI works. So we're going to do a little example of what it's like to be inside the scanner while you're having your visual activation part of your brain studied. So let's say they want to see what part of your brain is active while your eyes are working. That's visual activation. So during rest, you would just see this cross. And then during a task, you would see this checkerboard. So we're going to practice. And we're only going to do a little tiny bit and do it quickly. But you would see this cross. And then you would see this checkerboard spin. And then you see the cross. And then you see the checkerboard spin. And then you see the cross. And what happens is that you can see that in each individual part of your brain where your eyes are processing, there's a response to the checkerboard. And your blood flow goes up in that region because your brain cells are firing more. And you see this increase each time that the checkerboard is on. That's what you see. And then you can take that and you can use some mathematics. And you get this beautiful image. And you can see that this is the part of the brain, it's called the occipital lobe, where we see, that's where the visual processing in the brain is done. But we do so many things with functional MRI now. So there's something called resting state FMRI. So imagine that you're a person who can't actually do much of anything anymore. Suppose you couldn't even open your eyes. Suppose you were paralyzed and you couldn't let someone know that you could hear them. Functional MRI is a way that we can tell whether or not you can hear us without that. So it's a way to determine whether or not someone is just asleep or whether they're under anesthesia or whether they have a loss of consciousness or whether they're in what's called a vegetative state. So this resting state MFMRI works like this. So we talked about how the finger tapping worked earlier. So imagine that you're tapping your fingers. So you're tapping your fingers and then not. So the rest state, instead of not seeing anything, is that you don't tap your fingers. But then you tap your fingers. And then you stop. So you could do that. And if you did that and you were using both your hands, what it would look like in the functional MRI is that this would be one of your hands tapping and this would be the other hand tapping. And this is called a task. What we found out, us as a community of the world, is that if I pick one little part of the brain here and I look to see what other parts of the brain look like it in time, I can pick out all of the parts of the brain that operate my fingers. All of the parts of the brain that operate fingers look alike in time just while you're resting. Those parts of the brain are connected all the time. And so what we do is make movies of the brain with functional MRI. So it's a very handy thing and very exciting that we found that out. And these are some examples. So this again is finger tapping. This is with both hands. And this is what you have at 3T. And this is what you get at seven Tesla. So this is another reason, look at the beautiful quality of these images. They're so bright and sharp and you get so much cleaner imaging of the brain. So imagine, for example, that you would have to go for a brain surgery for some reason. And the surgeon would like to be very careful that when you come out from your surgery, you could still use your fingers. And he wasn't quite sure because maybe where he has to go to fix something is just right about here. Well, it would be very nice if he could see exactly what parts of your brain you used to use your fingers. So that he could carefully navigate himself around that. So that's one of the reasons that we do this now in hospital. So that's what I have. And this is in summary, we have MRI combines all these different kinds of things. So we take quantum mechanics and electromagnetism and classical mechanics. And if you don't like any of that stuff, maybe you like computers and maybe you like circuits. We need all of that. Or maybe you're a medical kind of interested person and you want to study the central nervous system or the skeleton or internal organs. You can use MRI for that. And then maybe you'd rather just do some data acquisition, maybe you want to do data analysis, maybe you like those kind of things. All these different areas contribute to MRI. And I have found it to be a really wonderful field. I enjoy it very much and I hope you liked my talk. It was so, such a privilege to get to talk to you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for talking today. Um, we do have a question in the chat, this was from pretty early on. It says, does MRI include harmful radiation? I think you might have covered this when you were saying about.
Yeah, no radiation at all. So if I could say a word about that, because I think it's confusing. So electromagnetic radiation, if you say electromagnetic radiation, that covers everything that's electromagnetic. And so in a way, there's electromagnetic radiation, but it's not harmful. Because it doesn't take the electron off of the proton, which is called ionization, which is when it hurts you. So this can't hurt you because the energy is way too low. So it doesn't disrupt your atoms and your chemistry inside your body in a way that can hurt you. The way higher energy electromagnetic radiation does. So you have to have at least ultraviolet to do that. They talk about 5G causing damage. There's no concrete evidence of that at all, none. It's kind of a wife's tale at this point. And I've been looking into that with some friends of mine, but we haven't found anything yet.
MRI makes me think of x-rays in the chat, so.
And x-rays are ionizing radiation and you have to be careful with the dose. That's a very different thing.
Yeah.
Because you're right about that. That's why you'd rather have an MRI than an x-ray.
Okay, yes, and we will have our thank you card signing right now. So um, if you could stop your screen sharing, I think.
Oh, thank you very much, I didn't know exactly what to do.
Meanwhile, I also have a question.
Oh, thank you.
MI machine is someone when it's be easier to machine for the experiment, for the scan. You can do finger tapping. But if I were to study, you know, what's a FMRI image where someone is learning or where someone is programming? How can people do a more complicated tasks? If we want to obtain their FMRI while they are performing those tasks?
Well, so here's a very interesting thing. We did our FMRI, you can do it in bursts. So you take the MRI scan, so if you show somebody, maybe a word you want them to learn. And then you acquire the MRI data after that. And you're also able to show them anything you want inside the scanner as long as they hold still, it's no problem.
Okay.
So we've even done MRI of people talking inside the scanner. It's all timing, you just have to be very careful with your timing.
Can you have a computer display inside of the scanner?
Yes, you use mirrors.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you bet we have, we bet we have a computer display inside the scanner.
Lisa, I believe there's another question in the chat window.
Oh, can you ask it? I'm in screen sharing, so it's chat is harder for me to see. Or nevermind, I can find it.
Yeah, the question is about the resolution of MIC-T and x-ray.
Oh, the resolution of MRI, CT and x-ray. So MRI and so MRI has the lowest resolution of the three. CT, so MRI you can get two millimeters, so you could get to millimeter by millimeter. With CT, you can get sub-millimeter. And with x-ray, you can also get even smaller than that. So with x-ray, so for example, in a mammography, in mammography, you can get to micron, like 50 micron. So 50, it's times 10 to the minus six meter, very small. Times 10 to the minus three millimeter in x-ray. CT is about, CT depending on the scanners, MRI and CT can be close to equivalent, but CT can get better. And now that we have spiral CT, they're very fast. And they can be very, can be very well resolved, maybe a factor of 10 better than MRI. So MRI, maybe two millimeter, two millimeter, two millimeter size voxels. And often we're lower than that when we actually do the scans, depends on what kind of scan you want.
I see, and before we do the next question, I'm just going to say, for the signing the thank you card, please use the annotate function. For those of you who haven't done it before, at the bottom of your screen, there should be like a pen icon that's the annotate. And then you can use a different like, oh, text tools or just pen tools and then sign your name, please. Okay, thank you.
So why are MRI pics only black and white? So they're black and white because we don't, we use a scale, an intensity scale that usually goes from zero to 256, zero to 255. And that's the intensity of each one. And then when we do FMRI or DTI, we do an overlay and then we can use red, green and blue for the overlay. But there isn't really a need for, for color in the MRI as, as, as it is. Because the T2 and T1 values are intensity values that you can handle with just gray. So if you needed to image flow, it's not quite like ultrasound that way. So sometimes we, when we do angiography, you can add color for the flow. I hope that answers that question.
Okay, um, if there are any more questions, please ask now. And everyone, please finish signing the card. A thank you again for everyone who participated, thank you to everybody who participated. And thank you, Dr. Essing for sharing.
Answering Jeffrey Ren's question. So I would say that it's a little bit tricky to say that MRI has less clear images. Because one of the things that's important is not just how small the voxel is. It's whether or not you can distinguish the tissue types. So if I can make very tiny voxels, but I can't see, I can't tell the tissue types apart, it doesn't matter. So we think of it as contrast to noise and MRI has the best contrast to noise in certain parts of the body. And CT and x-ray also have very good contrast to noise, but it depends on what you're scanning and what you're looking for. So I don't want to, it's my favorite and it has no radiation dose, but it isn't the best for everything. Like it's not the best for bone.
So that's done?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you all for attending.